Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Lexington's Planning Commission meeting. This is our normal monthly meeting. It's being held at 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, September 18th, 2019. The meeting is being broadcast live and recording will air on Town's informational channel 1301 several times during the week. It also will be located on the Town's website. I am Keith Frost, the Planning Commission Chair, and I would ask the other members to please introduce themselves.
Good morning, I'm Frank Berry.
Good morning, Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning, I'm Brian Amick.
Good morning.
Ross Goof Kaufman.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Feig.
Good morning, I'm Jeannie Michaels.
Good morning, I'm Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, I'm Chris Brownlee.
Good morning, I'm Ron Williams for Town Council.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Manus, Town Council.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Stuart Ford, the Assistant Town Administrator.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask Vice Chair Berry if he will lead us in an invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this cooler morning. Thank you for this changing of the season as we're approaching upon it. Be with those who protect and conserve our country, from the military to our first responders. Be with this body as we plan the future of Lexington and make it prosperous in all we do. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and welcome Chris Brownlee, our newest member. Chris, we're glad to have you with us. All right. First item of business is approval of minutes from our August 21st, 2019 meeting. You have those in your packet. Are there any changes, corrections?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. All right. Having no old business, we, first item of new business this morning is election of officers. John?
Good morning. Now that we have a full commission back again, we need to go through our annual process of electing Chair and Vice Chair, so I'll open the floor first for nominations for Chairman of Planning Commission.
Nominate Keith Frost, Chair.
That'd be the fastest motion we've had in a year and a half.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I think by acclamation, then that would mean Frost is once again Chair of Planning Commission. And for Vice Chair, are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would nominate Frank Berry.
Second?
Again, are there any other nominations? Once again, by acclamation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. First item of, or second item of new business is site plan approval for Murphy's Express Gas located at 500 West Main Street. John?
Murphy's Express has requested site plan approval for a new store being planned at, on 1.1 acres located at 500 West Main Street. The site is currently occupied by a closed Rite Aid store. The property is owned General Commercial, which allows a convenience store to be located on the site. Plan includes a 2,824 square foot building with six multi-pump dispensers. Site currently has full access on, onto West Main Street and Old Chapin Road, as well as connectivity to the adjacent commercial center. The proposed plan closes the full access on West Main Street and utilizes a shared access with the commercial center. It also converts the full access on Old Chapin Road to a restricted access. Plan also includes installation of concrete medians on West Main Street and Old Chapin Road. The medians will restrict left turns off of West Main Street and eliminate left turns off of, excuse me, they will restrict off of West Main Street and eliminate left turns off of Old Chapin. Connectivity to the flight deck is also retained. Project appears to meet all zoning requirements. We have a couple of representatives from Murphy if you'd like to discuss anything with them.
All right.
Or if you have any questions.
All right. All right. Do we have any questions of staff? We have folks here from Murphy's. Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Wayne Gibson with Murphy USA. Our address is 200 Peach Street, Eldorado, Arkansas. I'm delighted to be here. I was here again last week and we're back again. With me, Mr. Greg Sistrunk with Kekin Wood, the engineers for this project, and Mr. Tyler Brandt in real estate. We like this area and we have five locations in the county, three here in Lexington, one in West Columbia, one in Columbia, and 57 sites around the state of South Carolina. You know, we, we've been looking at this area for some time and, you know, we've come up on this particular location and it's, as I'm sure as all of you know, there's a behemoth there, that dark site, and we're willing to take that down. We look for areas that are conducive to development. Of course, we look for traffic. We don't, you know, create that additional traffic, we just take some of what's already out there on the, on the roadway. And of course, we look at competition, margins, housing, other retailers in the area as well. But as I said, we really want to be here. Once again, we want to add to the economy. I had our tax people take a look at what impact a site like this would have on this particular location. They're saying about $12,500 per month in, in sales tax revenue, that's year after year, and about $47,000, $48,000 in property tax a year or so. We think that would be impactful and I'm sure with this sales tax revenue, you could, you know, buy some new police cars, upgrade, you know, several things around here in Lexington. But again, if you have any questions concerning Murphy and who we are, I'm ready to try to answer those. Mr. Sistrunk answering the questions on engineering and Mr. Brandt on real estate.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Gibson or his associates?
I do have one question and this came up a little bit this morning. Landscaping and ordinance and tree ordinance. It's my understanding there are some, some large trees on this lot that should be, for the ordinance, protected. Is that your plan?
Greg Sistrunk, I'm with Kekin Wood, Murphy's engineer for this project. There are two existing trees at the corner, 16-inch trees, throughout the corner of Old Chapin and West Main Street. We do not have a plan to save those trees at this time, but we are certainly looking at the two trees at the corner. There is one tree closer to the building, of course it has to go. But the two at the corner, we're going to try to save those. Of course, we're trying not to get in the tree's natural drip zone. If you disturb the roots, good chance that those trees won't make it, so we'd rather have a nicer three-inch diameter tree at that location. But we're certainly going to try. We're going to have to make sure the grades work out well so that we don't disturb the root zone, so.
Dan, I assume you'll be working with them to work through those issues?
I'm sure we will.
All right. All right. Green space, it's hard to tell on here how much green space you have and where it's located. Can you, can you give us a little better idea of what your plan is for the green space?
So, this plan is what we prepared for the Appearance Board last week. We are making some site plan modifications. I have those with me. Those are ready to be distributed to the city. But you guys do not, you guys did not receive that in your package, since we just got the comments last week. But the parking on the west side of the parcel, you see about eight spaces there. We are preparing to install those because we're losing eight spaces from the flight deck commercial development. So we are replacing those parking spaces and making the adjacent property owner whole. So those parking spaces will be shared parking spaces between ourselves and the commercial development next door. One of the comments made, and we've, we've agreed to the comment, is there seems to be an expansive amount of concrete on the west side for, due to those parking spaces, so we have taken those parking spaces and we have shifted them east. So we now have about a 20 to 25-foot landscape buffer between the property line and the parking. Just creates a little bit more open space. We didn't need that much concrete. What we're trying to do with this layout is provide parking close enough to the flight deck development so that folks can associate that parking with that development. Murphy certainly doesn't need those parking spaces, but we are trying to make whole the parking spaces being lost due to the combined access off West Main Street.
Okay. How's that going to affect your traffic flow, especially for your, your commercial vehicles if you shift that out, which is going to get closer towards your, your turning radius there?
Sure. So what we've done is we've taken the drive aisle associated with the flight deck restaurant and, or the development, and we have projected it straight towards Main Street. So the existing access is, is full access. Cars are making left turns, right turns, it's, it's fully available to ingress and egress movements. What we're doing is we're shifting the access a little bit closer to the signal, maybe 30 feet, in order to get an aligned driveway. What we don't want to do is create, when cars make a turn in, we don't want them to have to make a 130-degree turn to get back to the drive aisle, so we've certainly aligned that up. The grades will be worked, will work out a little bit better. Right now, there's a big, there's a pretty steep incline up to the site. We're not planning to demolish the entire portion there, but we are trying to flatten the grades out a little bit better. Also like to point out that we've, we've talked with the DOT, we've met with the town, and DOT is generally receptive to the layout. There is a reduction in the left turn lane on West Main Street with the combined access, and that reduction is simply because we have to have enough room for our cars to align with the driveway. So.
I can point that out. This drive here on the board is existing here. We're taking this drive and removing it to the use. So it lines up with the parking. That means the ingress lane will line up with the parking, so when traffic is making a right turn, they can simply enter the site without delay. We do not want to try to hold this, and we're planning to make this existing asphalt based on comments received from DOT. This is the asphalt there that's currently served as parking. We are not allowed to have that in the driveway. So we can imagine that that's, that's a pretty dangerous situation to have parking that goes through the travel lane, so we're also planning to take these two parking spaces out. We don't show them on this road, but we're planning to come down and make this, make this movement here so that cars don't actually back up and go out that way. That's just a bad movement on the other.
Where's your trucks' access to refill your tanks?
Sure. So the trucks, so this little area here, this is the underground stores' tanks. Whatever, I'm grabbing, not this is those, this is the curving station. Our trucks are coming off West Main Street eastbound, entering this left-hand of the meeting, this curve that we have here. This is the proposed meeting. This is the proposed meeting. So our trucks are going to enter off West Main, make this turn in, they have to be fueled from the passenger side only, so we can get that to work. And that's a, that's a current practice.
So they're going to make a left turn and then have enough turning radius to make a right turn into the fueling?
Yeah. We typically put in the truck lanes, the truck turn movement, so that everybody's aware of what we're planning to do. We won't let the DOT know this is how much space we're planning to take because the National 7Z50, which is our tank truck, is, you know, they're not staying inside the vehicle lane in every scenario, whatever those, so we're trying to make the best effort to provide movement on the area. So we've got an extra wide 40-feet drive-off connecting our development with the flight deck. So you can see the movements here coming in, and then this movement here. And what, you see these lines on the outside and the inside? These are, this is the actual front of the truck. And so this lane here, the dark lines are the, are, so this is the outside, the edge of the green, the front of the truck. Again, it comes through here and then move the movement and go to the back, westbound. We, we've, we've thought through about 12 concept plans.
It's going to be tight. I mean, there's another, not a gas station, but another situation, and it gets tight getting the trucks in and out.
Sure. We've, we've made this drive-off here 38 feet, so there's a reason the building is set back in this little area. The reason for that is the property line, of course, is skewed a little bit, so I get the parking door a little rid. We looked at moving the building here, we've looked at here, we've rotated the canopy, then we've got the 12 concept plans, we think this is, this is the best one. We've also provided a right-in, right-out on West Main Street and not provided a condition. But based on comments received from traffic, this was, this was thought to be the better that time, to provide our entrances. Of course, we're moving that entrance. Right now, the full access is here, we're moving that further away from the intersection. Another one, one problem that DOT is explaining to us, and we've got several of these sites that we're looking at wanting to let out movement. So there is not going to be a left-out movement allowed from this development, and a left-out movement will also not be allowed in shape to be approached.
And you'll have a, like a triangle median at those units?
Just the one has a triangle raised concrete median, so it will have signage. So the reason for the median here is if someone makes a right-out, you don't incorporate the median, and that's a third guidance of DOT. They can simply still make a left turn, and that's their biggest issue right now with a lot of these sites. So with the right-out, we're planning to install a median. It's the places they've been looking at channel off, there isn't doing this, but there's enough room on the roadway to count out. You don't have to do that, you can simply fill the median at work. But we did provide extra space here 38 feet wide within the canopy and the parking, and that's it, that allows our trucks in from that side without having to run over the parking spaces. I'm very feeling, but then we're looking at this and the building layout, so we always get the brush and cord to the board because we don't want the truck to be able to take it out or.
And the same median is on the other entrance too, like the West Main?
Right. The same median is here. The only difference with this median is allowing left-in movement, preventing right-out or, or, sorry, preventing left-out movement. So this will be incorporated to allow left-in to the site. Right now, you can make a left-in to the site without restriction. So we wanted to keep that based on the amount of development and how vehicles use it in this development. So there is going to be a minor loss of storage length here, so we lose about 40 feet of the intersection. But making this, making this development a little more efficient with this little access, that's kind of a, we have to move, we have to move it somewhere, so that's why we chose to turn it a little bit. We talked about maybe providing the same storage and moving this down, but I don't want, I would not like to move this median further down because it, it aligns the driveway, it doesn't align with the parking. To me, that's, that's negative addition, so.
All right. Just two, two quick questions. One, the, the raised median, and I don't know if this is our purview or whether this is just something from the staff or architectural review, but I would request that we do something other than just a plain concrete white median there. It's in our, in our overlay district and I would hope we could do something of a, of a paver or something similar to maybe what we have downtown, but something other than just a concrete median. The other, the parking in the space that you're losing up at the corner in front of what used to be the recruiting office, I'm not sure if that's still what it is up on the Flight Deck Shopping Center. What's your proposal to go back there? Will that be green space or is that going to be concrete?
So we're proposing it has to be green space.
Okay.
They can't serve, we don't want vehicles to use that area. We already worked out with the flight deck owner, we let them know that he can't keep this access like this because it's really skewed.
Oh, it is.
The parking, it's not the best layout. And I understand why they skewed it, they're trying to create a separation between the segments. But we're, we're not trying to use that movement, we're trying to move it more forward, so it aligns with the problems, a little bit safe conditions. But we didn't, we did not landscape this area, but we're planning to, push the trees in here. Parking doesn't affect site distance, but really, site distance is not an issue here because you're not looking, you're not looking westbound.
Yeah. Tree, shrubs, grass, something other than concrete.
I had two questions. The parking that you're going to share with the flight deck in the Murphy, with the shrubs, do you plan to put any type of sidewalk-type crosswalk through there so you don't, you're not stumbling through the landscaping and the bushes and the...
So on our proposed revised layout, this parking here, this new stripe is moved up to about right here. It's still offset, but this parking is just, we didn't want to create this combined parking because that was too far from here. So we made a conscious decision to move this parking a little bit further up this way, so you guys opt for 100 feet, that might be a very, from here, back to the property line. And we're preparing to let's get on this move for a minute.
I think there needs to be some type of sidewalk-type path to get them through from one together.
We had placed a sidewalk here on this edge of parking spaces. Imagine this can move forward about 20 feet. And we were planning to put a sidewalk along the, on this exterior side of the landscape area, so there will be a separation between the bedrooms and the property coming in and out. But that doesn't, that's not, we're not married to that. We can certainly go from the end of the sidewalk up to this top here. If we put a sidewalk up to the middle here, these are parking spaces, we would have to move another parking space if you don't want to put out the bedrooms, without, shut out everything. So that's why we put a parking, a sidewalk here, and then we can certainly strike across, crossing, crossing over to...
Isn't there a change in elevation slightly from those two spots too?
Yeah, this is about 300 feet higher up here, but being able to have a landscape, I think the landscape helps us.
If you put the sidewalk on the edge of that landscape down to that island, that, and then force them over to that direction, that should...
This here, we, right. We're not, we're not held to AB standards with this parking, so the sidewalk can receive the AB standards, 5%. I think it's going to roughly be around 5%. But the handicap is up here, that's the building, we don't want the gap. We made it to cross traffic, so you're not losing any handicap space, you said, the best part.
And the next thing is the median on Old Chapin, how does that affect the Rush's complex entrance of turning left?
Sure. So we, I don't have it to here, but the restaurant that's located here, there is a north, there is, there's a drive-off to the north of Rush's that simply allows customers to make a left turn and come out on the Old Chapin. This median will prevent that movement because he is aware of that restriction, but that's not a bad thing.
It prevents the restriction from the first entrance?
From the first, so there's a driveway here, basically you are not penacing.
Right.
It's probably more like this, so people are not going to be making a left-hand turn. So this is the drive-off right north of Rush's. There's also parking spaces for the, for the other development. And then there's another drive-off north of that, so if you want to make a left turn on Old Chapin, you simply take this to the next entrance. You can, you can still leave the property and make a left turn, you just further widen the intersection. This is a provided benefit of that, you know. Same thing for the Walgreens across the street. There's an, there's an access entrance here, so this median is going to prevent a turn from the Walgreens, but that's not a bad thing, not for anyone. But I did look, and Walgreens, for those that want to go westbound on West Main Street, there's another access that they can use, which is further than intersection, so we're not restricting left-hand movements from those parcels. We're just restricting a certain ones that are too close to intersection, which is really the provided benefit of that, you know. We're not restricting access from either of the parcels.
All right. Any additional questions?
Yeah, the, the turn lane on West Main coming from, away from Lexington or whatever. How, how long is that turn lane? Coming up on the left side of the...
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, turning left into, on West Main, is there, you move over, you have a space because of the stacked up traffic?
Right. So this, this little area here, what this is, is simply the taper to get into the left turn lane. So right now, the turn lane, the full, the full turn lane for a full car to sit there is about 190 feet long. We're, our reduction takes that down to 150 feet. So we're reducing the storage by about 40 feet. And the reason for that is the majority of this turn lane here, the majority of the length is caused in the taper, so it just simply allows the car to move over to the left turn lane. So if it's backed up, a car can't fully sit in the taper section, and a car can't move, maneuver around, so we're only looking at storage length. So we are reducing it about 40 feet in order to get this access lined up here.
Has any conversation been had with the folks across the street where the Rush's and the other complexes at?
Good morning. My name is Tyler Brandt. I'm the real estate manager at, at Murphy USA. I cover the southeast area, worked in a number of different states for the company, primarily focused in the South Carolina market, especially Columbia. So I spent a lot of time down here working with the community and sourcing opportunities. To answer your question, no, there's been no conversations with the owner of the Rush's. We have been working with Ted, sitting back here with the owner of the Flight Deck Shops. We've been working on this collaborative effort to get these two properties to line up and be cohesive for the community. So as far as off-site with, with the Rush's, no. And really, that's been by design, just given the two drive aisles, that they're still going to be able to make their left-hand turn out and access Old Chapin Road. So that we intentionally not engage them. If we need to, we will. We understand that medians can cause issues, but I'm open to that. I'll be the person to go in and speaking with them. But for the most part, we've, we've put our efforts towards working with Ted with Flight Deck.
I think it would be a good idea to at least let them know that that left movement out is going to be restricted for them at that location.
Mr. Chairman? Yes?
I just wanted to mention, since we were here last time, I think Greg mentioned it, I had our fuel department get in touch with the terminal. They'll be pulling out of North Augusta, so we had them come by and, and had a driver come by and take a look at the site, and they believe they can get in safely and out safely. You know, one thing we never want the truck to do is to back up for various reasons, but the terminal has been by to take a look at the proposed truck route.
All right. Thank you. Well, I appreciate the, the consideration for Rush's. From a traffic safety standpoint, eliminating that left turn is not a bad thing, and also having traffic queue up right there at their entrance is not a bad thing.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just being blindsided to my opinion that all of a sudden that goes away.
Yeah. I'm assuming DOT will make, approve this, there'll be some discussion with those folks. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
A move for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And I do want to thank you folks publicly. I know we've, we've been working through this for several months and I appreciate the efforts that you guys have done to, to work with the adjacent property owner for access, to address ingress and egress issues, to minimize... to work with the adjacent property owner for access, to address ingress and egress issues, to minimize traffic hazards. So thank you very much for your efforts. I think it showed a lot that you guys were willing to compromise and do things that folks have asked you to do. Thank you.
What about timing of construction?
All right. We're still going through our due diligence phase on the property, so running title and getting through all that. Certainly coming here and making sure we have a cohesive plan. So from here on, we'll continue with our submittals for permitting with DOT and John here to make sure we're meeting all the requirements. Construction will likely be sometime next year, late next year.
And once it started, probably 12 to 14 weeks, weather considering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next item for business is annexation of property at 500 Block of Old Cherokee Road, John.
I just want to say something else real quick. We can issue a demo permit very quickly.
Kudos.
Once the asbestos survey is submitted.
Thank you very much.
A&amp;T Custom Builders and Remodeling own 1.4 acres located in the 500 Block of Old Cherokee Road and have petitioned to annex the property. We're not aware of a specific use that is being planned at this time. Properties in town near this one are Zone Protected Residential 2 and Limited Commercial. Old Cherokee Road is classified as a collector road. Due to the surrounding conditions, limited commercial zoning is recommended for the property and collector road classification is recommended for Old Cherokee Road.
So what is on the property at this point?
A house.
Okay, and we're recommending limited commercial?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason for that?
Is the school adjacent to this property?
No, it's close, but it's not directly adjacent.
I'm just, I'm trying to look at what's around, and I know that on that road, there's a hodgepodge. And I'm just, without a specific use.
So there's no house on that.
Okay, without a specific use, I guess my thought and recommendation would be a more restrictive zoning. And if they decide to come back with a plan to develop it as a commercial property, then maybe we would look at that at that point.
Other options you have in the zoning ordinance are neighborhood commercial and office commercial or a residential classification.
Correct, since we do have PR2 close or adjacent. So just a thought from the group.
All the, all the things like Birtwood, all List, all that on the other side, are they all limited commercial?
The things that are in town in that section on the other side of the road are all limited commercial, which is part of the reason why we recommend it.
That's probably where the other side's going.
As well as other properties that we have on Old Cherokee out towards the elementary school are also limited commercial.
Okay. The ones adjacent to it that aren't in town, are those residential properties, do you know?
It appears that way from the aerial photograph, yes.
Okay, well, I mean, again, yeah, yeah, I mean, I could see the area transforming over time, but if we've got residential on the sides of it, and it doesn't appear that there's a whole lot right around it, at least heavily developed, I just.
Pond across the street is part of that subdivision.
Correct. Okay.
Village Green.
Yes, backside of the old golf course. Okay, all right, so do we have a motion? All right, do we have a second? All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
That's for what?
That is for limited commercial. All right, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, those opposed? All right, that concludes our agenda for this morning. Do we have any other items? Traffic update, Frank? All right, nothing there. Anything from Councilman Manus?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations on your reelection as chairman.
Thank you.
And for you too, Mr. Berry, as always, thank you for everything y'all do. You do a great job of keeping our town safe, and we appreciate what you do. Welcome, Mr. Bradley, we're glad to have you. The commission will be glad to know we had three excellent candidates to serve on the Planning Commission, and town council was excited about that. Mr. Bradley served in the past for the Planning Commission for the City of Columbia. So he brings that experience with him. And out of the candidates, we actually found someone to serve on another committee that we needed. So we were very happy to see that. So thank you very much for stepping up, and we're glad to have you. Our farmer's market is still going on until the end of September. It's the Market Ice House, Market at the Ice House. If you haven't been there, you need to go on Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. Lots of different variety of things for you, fruits and vegetables, soaps, nice clothes. It's just a great, great thing on Saturday. So we've got a lot of vendors, and a lot of people have been coming. So I hope to see y'all there on Saturday. Our Lexington Live Series started last week with the Swingin' Medallions. So we'll be going on Thursday, September 19th this week with the Mighty Kicks. And September 26th, we know will be big, Tokyo Joe. And October 3rd, the Big Time Band and South Side Station. Instead of Thursday, that will be on Friday, October 11th. These concerts are free, and we hope that you will come and support a lot that we have going on at Ice House. Thank you.
Thank you. Stuart, anything?
No, just good to be with y'all and thank you for what you do for the town. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything, John, yes?
Tentatively, we're going to move the Planning Commission meeting forward a week next month to October the 16th.
All right.
Anybody who still needs to get their three hours of continuing education, September the 27th at 2:00, will have another session.
I'm writing that down. Thank you very much. Yeah, I know, I'll be up here over Christmas watching videos. All right. Yeah. All right, anything else for the good of the commission? All right, hearing none, then without objection, we will be adjourned. And I want to thank you for watching the Town of Lexington Planning Commission. Again, this was our normal monthly meeting held at 8:00 AM Wednesday, September the 18th, 2019. A recording will be aired several times throughout the week. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I wish you a good day.